Good evening. Apologize for the lateness of our meeting. I would like to call the Peoria Public School District 150 Board of Education Meeting for October 26, 2015, to order. Would you please call the board? Mr. Atlin?
Here.
Mrs. Butler?
Here.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Mrs. Caspino?
Here.
Mrs. Jackson?
Here.
Mrs. Wolfman?
Here.
Mrs. Ross?
Here.
Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Community recognition. Dr. Karat? Chris.
Good evening. The Illinois State Board of Education annually sponsors those who excel, honor individuals who have made significant contributions to our state's public and non-public elementary secondary schools. Excellence, meritorious service, and special recognition awards are presented in seven categories: classroom teacher, school administrator and principal, student support personnel, or licensed personnel, educational service personnel, or unlicensed, school board member, community volunteer, team, and early career educator. Nomination materials are evaluated by a selection community comprised of individuals who represent a variety of educational organizations. Awards of excellence winners in the classroom teacher category are finalists for the Illinois Teacher of the Year. Public school district leaders and members and communities' nominated candidates. Here at Peoria Public Schools, nomination window actually begins in March or April each year for each category. Last school year was the first year that we aligned our awards with those who excel and whether a community or an individual or a team. It's quite a lengthy nomination form and requires several letters of support. We then convene a committee, which this year for the first time includes Red Brain Credit Union, who generously sponsors our awards. As you know, we named our winners at our back-to-school event back in August for our all-staff event. But before we even announce the award winners, we submit one to the state awards in June. Tonight, we wanted to bring back those winners and also recognize and thank their nominators. Now that the state banquet is over, it was held in Wilmington last weekend, and as an individual I talked to at the state last week said, Peoria cleans house. We were fortunate enough to have all seven of our nominees recognized. They have already received their district award and their state award. Tonight will give them their completed copy of their nomination packet. I don't think most of them have seen that yet. For educational, I'm going to call their names and their category along with the nominators so we can recognize both of them. We'll start with educational service personnel. Kara Benter was nominated by Dr. Dan Kearns. Kara is a classroom aide of Ridgewood's, and she earned an award of recognition. Educational service person, I'm sorry, student support personnel. Jackie Moncton was nominated by Connie Davis. Jackie is a physical therapist at several sites in the district, including the Developmental Center. Jackie earned an award of meritorious service. For the team award, Hindu Sway and Cebic Song was nominated by Pam Rumah. HSS is an international organization that through the leadership of Dr. and Mrs. Taker does some amazing volunteer work at TreeWin. K8 and HSS earned an award of excellence, one of four for us this year. For a community volunteer, Kathy Cobb is nominated by Carrie Berger and Carlos Evans. Kathy leads the snack pack program at Galeno Community Learning Center and now several other schools in the district. Kathy earned an award of excellence as well. For early career educator, Christina Signor was nominated by Terry Vaughn. Christina is a Spanish teacher at Manuel Academy, among many other responsibilities she tackles at school. Christina earned an award of recognition. For school administrator, Heather Young was nominated by Belinda Daly. Heather is the principal at Manuel Academy. Mrs. Young earned an award of excellence as well. And finally, classroom teacher, Kim Thomas, was nominated by her principal, Tom Blumer. Kim is a teacher for both the Safe School and Contemporary School at Woodruff Career and Technical Center. In addition to earning an award of excellence, we found out just before our staff awards in August that she was also a top-ten finalist for state teacher of the year. Last weekend, she was named teacher of the year for Illinois. She will now compete for national teacher of the year as well as be a state commodity. And she, I joked with her last week that she actually, I think, outdid us on Facebook for any snow days that we've ever had. We've had more views for her speech, and so we've asked her to come up and share a little bit of her speech that she made at the state banquet last weekend.
Well, give me a one. Give me a five. Give me a zero. Thank you, District 150, where remarkable happens every day. I will save my math cheer for later. I just love meeting other teachers. It was such an awesome experience last Saturday to meet the outstanding other state finalists and the past state winners. I am so mathstatic about meeting more fabulous teachers at Wednesday's PD. Teachers are phenomenal for making their classroom the best part of a student's day and choosing outcome over income. Dr. Karat and school board members, after the square root of 361 years, the award is back to remarkable District 150. Thank you, school board members, for sending me congratulatory emails. It is greatly appreciated. Dr. Val Pierce, right here to my left, received this award in 1997. She is an example for all to follow. Those of you who know me know that when it comes to education and math, I am never at a loss for words, but this should only take about the first composite number of minutes. I have to get back home, grade papers, write math muscles for tomorrow. Teachers are always busy. I am so grateful to the selection committee at the ISBE and the state superintendent, Dr. Smith. I feel so math-tastic and honored to have this award. Sorry.
It's okay. You're just teaching the whole state.
I want to give an up to thank you to Mr. Tom Blumer for nominating me. He describes meeting me like getting hit by a bulldozer made of math. Dr. Karat, I am ready to passionately bulldoze all my math-licious ideas for teaching across this great district and state. My entire teaching career, including student teaching, has been in Peoria. A shout-out to Pat Jackson, who I student taught with at Ting long, long ago. Yeah, Pat, Pat. She encouraged me and gave me the freedom to do my thing. I've been teaching for five times four plus three years, and my family has listened to all of my math-liciousness. They will tell you I don't skip a day. I've been known to answer questions with a math problem or create math-themed songs by replacing the words to their favorite lyrics. Like this year, my theme song, "Watch Me, Watch Me Whip Out That Equation," or instead of the nae-nae, we do the ray-ray. And my favorite, in place of the stanky leg, we do the hypotenuse leg. Anything can be a sell-a-math-bration. My family is as rare as the only even prime number. There's only one of those. It's two. It's a good thing Monday Night Football doesn't begin till 7:15, or my husband wouldn't be here. Charlie, I can't even. I compete with sports a lot, but that's okay. Charlie, I can't even put into numbers how much I love you, and I am so blessed to have soon shared two decades together. As you all know, Charlie is also a teacher, and I couldn't be happier to share the love of teaching with him. The number of children I have is the same as the number of acute angles in an acute triangle. I am from generations of stay-at-home moms. I'm the first woman in my family to work outside the home. Therefore, I know the challenges of raising a family and working and wondering, are your kids going to be okay? I am so dynamathically proud of Andy, Hank, and Rosie. Andy is an awesome role model by the way he lives and takes care of his own family. Andy's wife, Ann, is beautiful inside and out. She's a fabulous mom who gave me a wonderful granddaughter, Sophia. I just love it when she calls me and asks me for help on her math homework. And I know I go on and on and on just about one problem, but I want my excitement and love for math to rub off on her. My son's Hank's commitment to basketball and being a college student athlete is an inspiration. I have no doubt that while he is breaking ankles, he will also be breaking records. My daughter's Rosie's independence, outgoing personality, and dedication to whatever she is doing fills my heart with happiness. I never worry about her future. I am so very grateful to have been able to share last Saturday's celebration with my mathazing parents. I'm thankful to have been raised in a Christian home and for their infinite as well as unconditional love. I know, I don't think any of my students are here. Of course, they weren't there last Saturday, but this is because of them. My students come first and are my inspiration in creating my methenching gutters, math muscles, and all my math-licious projects, so they will look forward to each math discovery. Last Monday, when we got back to school, the kids were so excited for me. We were doing a lot of hypotenuse legs that day. And the very next day, I got a new student enrolled in my class, and one of the kids went up to him and said, "Hey, hey, she won state." You know, like in basketball, when you win state, that's what she won. I was like, "There you go." I just love them. My wish is for all students to live, laugh, and love math. By the way, that's the title for my PD Wednesday. L cubed, live, laugh, love, dot, 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 you fill in the blank. This is the most challenging era to be a teacher. I want to encourage teachers to embrace change. As Illinois Teacher of the Year, I'm going to add to my math-licious passion, subtract all the I-can't and the we-can'ts, multiply by the I-can and the we-can'ts, then divide the love and respect I have for children and the teaching profession. This will equal an educational celebration.
I want to thank you all for coming this evening and say from my personal, I really am happy to see so many winners out here, and we celebrate you all. Thank you. Are you done? Okay, next on the agenda is the Can Do 413 Scholarship Award Fund. Tonight, the Community Contribution Award recognizes the Can Do 413 Scholarship Fund. The Can Do 413 Scholarship Fund was created by Jennifer Wilfong to prove $1,000 scholarships to the 2002 through 2008 fourth-grade classes at Living, I'm sorry, Irving Primary School. The Can Do students can challenge, were challenged to graduate from high school. That was a long time ago. They were challenged to graduate from high school. They then received a $1,000 Can Do 413 scholarship once they graduated from high school and then enrolled at an accredited post-secondary educational institution. The Can Do students totaled 375 students. More than $250,000 was raised to fund the Can Do 413 scholarships. Volunteers are providing mentoring to these students. The founder, Jennifer Wilfong, is here tonight. Jennifer, is she here? Oh, okay. Is here tonight along with several of her key supporters to provide more information about the Can Do Fund, 413 Fund. Would you come up?
It's hard to follow that. Win the state title, and we're just like slugging away mentoring and volunteering and stuff. But thanks for having us. It was fun getting the phone call. I'd like to thank a couple of the Can Do students that are here. It was a long time ago, but I met this short guy right here on my left, you're right, Andrew Jordan, all, you know, four foot of him when he was in fourth grade, on a November day, two days before Thanksgiving on 2002. And now he's 22 years old and proudly thinking about how he can replicate Can Do. And then Monique Marin just graduated in May, June of 2015, and has faced some tough times losing her best friend, who was just, who was also a Can Do graduate, and we lost her, Tasha, to lupus. So thoughts and prayers for her family. And then our mentors, our Can Do mentors are here. We've got Chris over there, Michael Uzi, former president at Irving, where we started the fund, and we got Carrie, we've got Mac, and we've got this guy here, he's done everything, Bob Coy, but these folks have been with me, and about 30 other mentors. But what is Can Do and why did I start it? Well, this is Halloween week, but during Thanksgiving time in 1982 and 83 and 84, my grandmother wouldn't let me bring home diverse people from my college basketball team for Thanksgiving. And we only got one day off, and so it was kind of important that people got a good meal on that day off. And that was November 92, 1982, 83, 84. And isn't it funny that two days, Michael Uzi, two days before Thanksgiving on 2002, almost 20 years later, we started the Can Do Scholarship Fund. This guy was in the crowd that day, and we told about 60 kids that day with a $5,000 death benefit for my grandmother who passed. That's what I did with it. We looked at 60 kids, again, Andrew was one, and said, "We're going to give you all a $1,000 scholarship when you graduate from high school, and you can go to any college you want. You can go to hair school, you can get welding technician, you can go to Harvard, you can go to ICC, you can go to Nebraska, you can go to Indiana University if you want to." But I thought I was done. But, you know, the good man upstairs works in mysterious ways and said, "No, you're going to do it again, and then again, and then again, and then again, and then again." And six classes later, about 375 students, and I'm like, "We got to raise some money." And so we started doing art sales, and it was amazing what people paid in this community for incredible fourth-grade artwork, right? To the tune of former chairman and CEO of Caterpillar, her proudly bought $250 fourth-grade artwork from our Can Do art sale and has always been, just FYI, I know he helps with the Quest Academy, right? And he's a very quiet contributor to Can Do. So we get up to 375 students, and the students and a few of the parents got with me and said, "It isn't about the money." And I went, "Well, that's fascinating, because I thought it was about the scholarships." And they said, "No." And this guy was a part of that. He said, "We need mentors." I'm like, "That's fascinating. I don't know anything about mentoring." And a gal that I bumped into said, "I can help you with that." And so we took the Seven Habits, what are there, eight or nine school months in a year, right? Take the Seven Habits of Sean Covey and Stephen Covey, and we can mentor kids one time a month in District 150 schools. And so we branch out, and we have 34 mentors over the last five years, hit multiple schools with Michael Uzi's leadership, and all of a sudden now we're raising money and mentoring hundreds of kids and all throughout District 150, and we never had a roadblock. Never. There's a lot of noise around District 150, and we never had a roadblock. So I thank you, District 150 and the board, and I want to pat you on the back. And we didn't get the data for the last year's class, but the previous four-year classes, does Can Do work? Yes or no?
Yes.
It does. And they're here to say it does, and they just did, but your graduation rates among Can Do students in this district are 2% to 9% higher than other kids who don't get Can Do mentoring led by Michael Uzi. So it works. It's not just the money, it's the mentoring. So the graduation rates are very, etc. But Board President Ross, I think I lied to you, though. We're not giving out $1,000 anymore. We're giving out two. And if they get to their fourth year in college, we're giving out an additional five. And so last night, I had the opportunity to tell Andrew, when he lands his senior in college, he's got another five grand coming to him, and I think his teeth about fell out. And Monique called me today, and I told her a little bit about the Peoria promise and explained to her that that was available to her at ICC. And so I think Can Do's just beginning. And I, last week, was in New York City working, and I had a gal that graduated with Andrew, Rashida Teagues, in Brooklyn, New York, contact me and said, "Ms. Wilfong, I'm a Can Do student, and I'd love to have a cup of coffee with you in New York City in the financial district across the street from World Trade that went down." So it's working, and I think it's just beginning. There's more to come, and I think there's going to be some Can Do graduates that are going to create Can Do Two, or Can Do Three, or Can Do Four. So I think this is one of many times that you'll be able to recognize Can Do efforts from, you know, the next generation. So thank you. Thanks for, you can see why we're successful, right? It takes a village, and it's not just me, it is all the work that these folks do. And Rick Floyd, it's good to see you.
And on behalf, Ms. Wilfong, on behalf of the Board of Education, Dr. Karat has a token of our appreciation for what you do for our students. Thank you. I remember when you started.
Yeah. Y'all thought it was crazy.
I was at Whittier, actually. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Great, great. Appreciate it.
Thank you all. And next on the agenda is Peoria's Finest Teacher.
Good evening. Peoria's Finest Teacher is a monthly recognition that we are sponsoring for those members of PFT that go above and beyond, exemplify best practices in teaching, and/or reach out to the community and parents to be involved in our schools. The teachers in this district work so hard to serve the children and families of Peoria each day, and we want to showcase this positive effort. We want to thank our winner's principal, Ms. Andrews, and any faculty. We want to thank our winner's principal, Ms. Andrews, and any faculty, friends, and family that are here in support of this month's winner. Our nominator of this month's winner is Molly Schiller. Molly, if you'll come up. And this month's Peoria's Finest Teacher is Tabitha Hannah Lewis at Treewind. Congratulations, Tabitha. Come up.
I remember after the first day of working in Ms. Hannah Lewis's classroom, I said to my husband, "I can't figure out this teacher Hannah Lewis. Either she's an excellent teacher or she's just crazy." Well, it didn't take very long for me to realize that Mrs. Hannah Lewis is a very excellent teacher and sometimes a bit crazy. Ms. Hannah Lewis expects nothing but the best from her students every day. She works hard to provide instruction that is rigorous, engaging, and meets multiple learning styles and needs. She is stern with her students and the queen of procedures, making sure that not a minute of their day goes to waste. She is constantly challenging students to do their best work and never settling for anything less. She uses specific praise to encourage students when they succeed and encourages them to not give up when they fail. Mrs. Hannah Lewis, every day that I walk into your classroom, it silently shouts, "We are learning." I am honored to get to present to you with this award for the month of Peoria's Finest Teacher.
I think I'm the only person who didn't write a speech. I definitely want to thank you. I'm completely overwhelmed, but very grateful that you saw something in what I do every day that deemed me worthy of this. So thank you.
Okay, announcements? Ms. Wolfmeyer?
We'd like to give a special thanks tonight to Woodruff Career and Technical Center for providing information about their school on the boards behind us. WCTC is home to career and technical education programs, including construction trades, metals, auto body repair, cosmetology, barbering, hair braiding, engineering, childcare, culinary arts, and CNA training. It is also home to the Illinois Teacher of the Year, Mrs. Thomas, our contemporary school on the second floor, and the regional safe school which is on the third floor. Coming up on November 19th, WCTC will host our last parent university of the semester starting at 5:00 PM. With high school registration right around the corner in January, parent university next month is the perfect time to visit Woodruff and see what programs might be a good fit for your high school student. We will have more information on our upcoming workshops at our next meeting, but we hope you will put November 19th on your calendar now. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other announcements? Mr. Floyd?
Yes, just last week, the Special Manufacturing Group, which is part of the Greater Peoria Economic Development Council's Workforce Alliance, held their manufacturing expo at Woodruff. And this is the second year that's been done, and it was attended by approximately 800 high school students and 108 graders on a trial basis to expose students to the opportunities for manufacturing careers in the central Illinois area. And we wanted to thank the staff and the principal and those at Woodruff that made that possible. It's a great way to expose students from the area to Woodruff and what it offers, and it also gives some attention to the issue of vocational education and the opportunities for manufacturing careers either with or without a college degree. And in the middle of the day when we were down there, the first day, actually the second day, the lights went out and it was a power failure in the entire block, so there were about 900 homes and two schools that were without power. And people just sort of accommodated it. The students sort of sat down on the floor, had a chance to ask some more questions, and everybody was in good order. And that's what happens sometime in manufacturing is things don't go well and you just have to improvise. So it was a great experience for that and we thank those that helped to make all of that possible.
Thank you. Any other announcements? Okay, I need approval of the minutes from October 13th, 2015. Got motion? So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? President.
Aye.
Mrs. Butler.
Aye.
Mr. Floyd.
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson.
Aye.
Mrs. Wolfmeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Ross.
Aye.
Thank you. We are now at the place on our agenda that provides an opportunity for the board members, for members of the community who wish to address the board. As you know, we are all volunteers elected by you to oversee development, implementation, and maintenance of a quality education for our students in Peoria District 150. The board welcomes your comments and suggestions relating to that goal. Recognizing that we all have our First Amendment rights of free speech, we ask that your comments be focused on those issues within the board's authority. There are some issues we are not at liberty to discuss in public such as personnel and other executive session topics. However, if you have a specific personnel concern that needs to be addressed, we will get a staff person to help you. In addition, board members are accessible outside of these meetings. Our phone numbers and emails are listed on the website, PSD150.org. We realized that three minutes may not be enough time for some of you to express your thoughts, so we have, I see the box is back. We have installed a comment box for your convenience and our board secretary will be collecting those comments after each board meeting to compile and share with the board and superintendent. When you are recognized, please come to the podium and state your name for our records. Each speaker has three minutes and no one under the age of 18 may address the board unless accompanied by a parent, guardian, or a teacher without the consent of the majority of the board. Our first speaker tonight is Ms. Sharon Cruz.
Recently, I told you about a 1983 manual grad. Now I want to tell you about 1993 grad Shane Freeman. I want you to know how well our grads have done in life. Please do not view Shane's quotes as my desire to pat myself on the back. It is manual grads whom I wish to celebrate. I hope you will find a way to draw attention to the accomplishments of 150 grads. Many manual grads are connected to current 150 students and have insights as to issues affecting the district. Shane credits the English curriculum for inspiring him. On Facebook, he wrote, "We all appreciate the impact you had on our lives. My wife even knows about you and how we had to learn Beowulf in your class. That was the beginning of my love for creative writing and it is a big reason that I am a journalist today." So thank you. My response was, "Shane, I am so happy to hear that Beowulf did that for you. I think there are those who believe that the old literature has no place in schools today. I disagree. It is history." Shane responded, "I completely agree with you and can testify to the fact that I became fascinated by historic literature because of Beowulf. It led to my interest in Shakespeare and theater, which led to my career in songwriting as well as a broadcast journalist career. So thank you for maintaining your stance. It made a difference." Shane earned a degree at ICC in Architectural Construction Technology and went on to Bradley for a year. He is the co-founder of an online magazine entitled, "I Am Entertainment" in Atlanta, Georgia, where he works as a sports and entertainment journalist and magazine publisher. Take a look at it, it's quite impressive. In 2005, he was nominated for a Grammy. In 2013 and 14 was named Magazine Publisher of the Year, the Best of Atlanta Awards. Shane had worked for a senior civil engineering CAD designer, as a civil engineering CAD designer, at Greenhorn and Omera in Atlanta. He has been the host of the Muse Broadcast and a co-host and sportscaster for Pass the Rock Podcast. Also, he is a VP at Frontline Compassion, a nonprofit organization teaching sustainable living to the poor in the USA and in African communities, and is a basketball skills coach at Atlanta Hawks Summer Camp for children 8 to 17. Shane and his wife homeschool their three children. Shane writes, "The inflation of grades and falsified test scores have hurt the public's trust in Atlanta's public system, so much that many families have returned to either homeschooling or just moving to a different part of town just to get out of harm's way. Inflating grades is definitely a problem, not to mention the behavioral issues teachers must deal with." Please, let's work to see to it that these comments don't apply to District 150. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cruz. Mr. Terry Nat.
You have before you a letter that was sent to me from an attorney from Miller Hall and Triggs when I inquired about some material from Quest School on enrollment. I was told that they asked for five days and they asked for 10 days and the attorney said he'd like to give me the information by the 19th. Obviously, I got the information on the 26th. What I'm saying is the attorney called me twice and penned a letter. I would hate to guess how much that FOIA cost when it's just a standard report that should have come to the Board of Education. If you look on the second page, it's the numbers in the classes at Quest School. If you notice, the left-hand side, the numbers are all inflated. When you look at the students in the classes, which I have, they're all inflated by one or two, a total of 13. Hopefully, you're not paying them for those 13 extra students that don't exist at Quest. I know you're on top of that and your financial people are surely on top of that, and hopefully that's true. Notice especially the 11th and 12th graders. 12th grade seniors, 36 kids. Are you kidding me? 36 kids in a senior class expected to go to college. What kind of curriculum are they teaching there? 53. 53 when they say 55, it's really 53. In 11th grade, 53. They're supposed to have 75. Remember when these kids started, there were 75 in that class in grade school. Down to 36, that's a drop of what, 39? Well, again, I wish Ms. Thomas was here, she could correct me. But my point is this, I was told how people were just lined up to get into the school, lined up, please, than look lined up to me. We displaced 900 children at Woodruff because we didn't have enough kids for four high schools. We put them on buses for the last five years all over town. We totally cheated those students on the North End so that this Quest School Choice program could be there. What about the choice of the 900 students at Woodruff, the 200 seniors and the 250 juniors that were replaced by 36 seniors and 53 seniors? Four to three vote closed Woodruff and put these kids, expelled these kids, to ride on buses out of that neighborhood for the rest of their lives. Last week, or two weeks ago, I should say, a couple of board members said, "It's done and it can't be undone. Everything can be undone." If you have a closed mind to changing things and doing the research-based material, I want to know what those 100 kids that went to Charter Oak and Lundberg, what they did. I want you to show me the research, what they did. I want you to show me the research of the students at Woodruff and what they did. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, John Bateman, 1004 Applewood Lane, Peoria, Illinois. I've observed with interest your deliberations and discussions with regards to the budget, but after the last board meeting, it could no longer stay silent. Ms. Wolfmeyer asked this board a very important question in the last board meeting, reference contract with Peoria Police Department. Wasn't the grant supposed to save the district money? As I recall from my time on the board, that's exactly what the grant was supposed to do, reduce the financial burden on the district while providing support in our schools. Unfortunately, the decision to reverse the non-renewal of this contract has put the district in a position to incur costs it cannot afford and should not have to bear. With regards to another decision reversal that will continue to have budgetary impact for foreseeable future, this board had decided prior to July 1 not fill Mr. Dolinsky's position upon his retirement. In fact, our two newest board members commented numerous times during their campaigns and community forums how the overhead on Wisconsin Avenue was the first place they were going to focus their attention in an effort to improve our budget situation, which was the direction the board was headed. So you can imagine my dismay to not only see the decision reversed and this position filled, but to watch our two newest board members go along with this replacement hire knowing the district can't afford it. Finally, I will ask this board again that which I asked for a year ago when I joined the board. Please make the top four to five SMART goals you have tasked the interim superintendent to accomplish public. This is the measuring stick you will measure her accomplishments by, and the public has a right to know how her job performance is being measured. It has been interesting to watch all the other administrators be paraded before the public and made to give an accounting to their SMART goals, but without knowing the superintendent's SMART goals, the public has no idea if what we saw is supportive tour SMART goals or mutually exclusive tour efforts. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Karen Geist?
Hello, good evening. I'm Karen Geist with K2 Benefits. We at K2 are the proud brokers for the health insurance for Peoria Public Schools. It is an honor to serve you. I was very inspired this evening, I've got to say, because I deal with math with this all the time, and I actually think reinsurance is math-licious. So I'm one of the few, but it's true, I genuinely love it. Anyway, tonight, on behalf of K2 Benefits and on behalf of the Insurance Committee, we ask that you please support the Consent Agenda Item Number Six to renew with HM, which is Highmark Life Insurance, for your reinsurance carrier on your medical and prescription. In doing so, what this will do is this will actually provide a better contract of safety net of protection when we move you from fully insured to self-funded. One of the things that we discussed was the contract types, and over the first couple of years, every year we would try and enrich those. And doing it all at once, they charge you a whole lot, but when you steadily do that, then it really doesn't happen quite like that. So this actually is a better contract type and provides you more of a safety net. This contract, we are asking that you guys go with a $275,000 specific deductible instead of a $250,000. And what that means is it's the individual deductible on each person on your plan where you guys fund the claims. The reason that we are asking that, we've gone through thorough review and we have reviewed this extensively with the Insurance Committee, and the math-licious numbers speak to us. So they literally do, they actually tell us. So in order to do this, your fixed costs go down just a smidge, they stay about the same based on your current number of people enrolled. It would be annually, the fixed cost for the reinsurance would go down just over $3,100 a year. So it keeps it about the same. The funding goes up a little bit, but that's to be expected, you know, that is offset. And so I think that's really it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you. Good evening. Hedy Elliott Gardner, 3811 West Pagewood, Peoria. I'm here tonight in a different role than you normally see me. I am the President of the Friends of Proctor Center, and the Friends of Proctor Center is putting together the Peoria Youth Orchestra. is putting together the Peoria Youth Orchestra. And tonight, I have with me Dr. Elena Gabor from Bradley University, District 150's very own Dr. Francisco Marchand, as an instructor. Ryan Hidden is a recent law school graduate and our volunteer grant writer. And we have Mac Pogue, a renowned community volunteer, and Ms. Joelle McLeod, the President of Proctor Center. We are, we've decided to put together the Peoria Youth Orchestra, and we define youth by spirit, not by age, so the orchestra is open to all people in Peoria, doesn't matter if you're three to a hundred or older. We welcome you, we welcome beginners and intermediate students and everyone in between. Our mission statement, we believe in making music together and empowering people through music. We are committed to inclusiveness and access. We seek to serve people at Peoria and surrounding counties with any or no musical training who enjoy playing with others. Our purpose for coming to the board tonight is solely to ask for your blessing and your partnership. We are raising all of the money ourselves through the Friends of Proctor Center. We are paying for our staff, we are seeking out donations for instruments and stands. And what we want to do is, we want to engage as many District 150 students as possible. We want to do this at no cost to the student, and they don't have to seek out and pay for an instrument. We have decided, through Friends of Proctor and now through PYO, what we want to do is, we want to actively engage youth and adults alike in positive, engaging, and organized activities, and what we really see is a rebirth of the South End, that's really our goal. We want to leave you with the last kind of idea. In sports, when you play sports, some people play and some sit on the bench. And in music and in life, no one is on the bench. So we want to engage as many people as possible. We look forward to inviting you to our first symphony, and we will, we promise to be the sound of the town, so thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Tanya Strong.
Hi, my name is Tanya Strong, and I'm Member of the District 150 Insurance Committee. I stand before you urging you to vote yes in support of Consent Agenda Item Number Six, which deals specifically with the reinsurance that Karen just talked about. This is a financially responsible decision. I also commend you for continuing to support our Insurance Committee by allowing us to meet on a monthly basis in an attempt to continue to discuss solutions to our ever and ongoing insurance increases. In addition, Consent Agenda Item Number Seven, I am also urging you to vote yes for Consent Agenda Item Number Seven, dealing with the ACT contract. Although there is a possibility that the district may be financially responsible for this test, I feel this is a sound financial decision that will save you money from the previous administration's recommendation, and most importantly, will benefit our junior students. Thank you.
Thank you. Information items, Dr. Karat guiding change through learning walks.
Thank you, President Ross. Mrs. Johnson is going to come up to the podium to share. We utilize quite a bit of strategies as it relates to improving teaching and learning, and she's going to show the board and the audience one specific strategy that is used by administrators and teachers on a daily basis. So, Ms. Johnson.
Good evening, President Ross, Dr. Karat, and school board members. One of the ways that is a best practice that we've used for years in the schools to help bring about change is through learning walks. And this year, we've really tried to make our learning walks be more intentional. With the AIOs, we also are in the buildings doing it, the Curriculum Department is constantly in the building to make sure that we are bringing about change in our district. So this will be just a short presentation on that. The purpose of learning walks, we use learning walks to collect data, to look for effective implementation of practices. If a school invests money, if the district invests money through certain professional development, then we want to see that in the classrooms. Learning walks allow us to see the focus on that. For instance, Cagan Strategies, we've invested lots of money in Cagan Strategies. Many of our schools have used their title dollars for Cagan Strategies because they love the program that came with that, the various resources that came with that program. Principals, district office administrative staff can use learning walks to go in and see, are we effectively using those Cagan Strategies? Was it a good source of money or a good source of Title I funds? It also gives us insights into our next steps. What do we need to continue doing within our schools and within our programs? Learning walks are non-evaluative. That's the best part about a learning walk. Learning walks do not go inside of a personnel file and become part of someone's overall evaluation that they get in February. Learning walks are truly meant to collaborate and help teachers, help staff members grow, it helps principals grow their schools. The benefits of learning walks, it gives support to the teachers without evaluating them formally. It allows them to get kudos, things they're doing great, keep that up, but it also gives suggestions of things they may have missed. This feedback is given in written and verbal form. It allows administrators to gather evidence that can help drive more professional development within their building. It also allows them to find teachers who may need needs. We don't want to continue losing teachers, so learning walks allows us to be able to help those teachers that we can hopefully retain without losing them from year to year. It identifies teacher leaders who can lead professional development within the schools or even outside of schools for our district. It provides data for follow-through, I discussed that, and it also identifies teachers who need outside support outside of the evaluation process. Fisher and Frey said learning walks have been transformative in the schools and district we work with, especially in moving from professional development to professional practice. So it continues to help us move and grow. It promotes reflective practice. Information gathered should be used by the administration as an opportunity to pose questions on the trend data they're seeing. It allows us, it allows us to engage teachers in conversations through PLCs, ULTs, or even entire faculty meetings. It allows us at the district to collect the learning walk information to say where we need to be able to continue focusing as a district in making instructional decisions. Who does them, how much, and when? Learning walks can be conducted by anyone, honestly. Administrators do it inside the building, administrators from the district office do it, teachers even do it. We have some schools who allow teachers to go in, and they do learning walks on their own peers. And it's very eye-opening, and it even pushes each other. I'm going to use a school last year that I was overseeing, and that school went in, and they were looking at the rigor of questions within their classrooms, and they did a learning walks at the very beginning of the school year. All the questions were basic level questions, feedback, or just regenerative, give back the general yes-no answers. They knew they needed to move that in order to do better for the upcoming park exams. They spent some PD, they taught themselves how to take those higher-level questioning stems around with them to continue using that. They did another learning walk through midway through the year, and they started seeing their level of questionings go up on the Bloom's Taxonomy Scale. By the end of the year, that school was really pushing that way. It was non-evaluative, it wasn't one peer saying to another, "You're not doing anything right." It was saying, as a staff, this is what we need to do and working on that. They should be done daily in order for us to gather sufficient evidence. We have to be in the classrooms. A lot of times, just presence in the classrooms helps cut down on kids because kids want to make us proud. They like to make visitors proud in the classroom to show off what they're doing great. They should be done at different times of the day. You can't just gather feedback in the morning, we also need to see what's going on in the afternoons as well. How often should they be done, or how long as far as time limit? You can do a learning walk as simple as four to five minutes, up to ten minutes long. These are non-evaluative, they're quick snapshots during certain periods of time of the day to see what's going on. What do we do with next steps? As we move forward in our district, we must form a trusting relationship with each other. In order to make the necessary changes that will take our district forward, we must be willing to be reflective practitioners. Learning walks will allow us to be proactive instead of reactive. It's allowing us to identify those needs so that we can tackle those, as I said, so that we can retain our teachers, so that we can continue growing. Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Can I ask a quick question? Can you talk about the, where are we at in the journey, I guess, in terms of adopting learning walks? And, you know, is this kind of a district-wide, been in place for years, practice? Are they implemented consistently across all the buildings, or is there a little bit of flavor amongst the different ones?
We have been doing them for years consistently. I would say that there has probably been some buildings who hasn't been consistently doing them, but this year, we are consistently doing them. Our expectation is that principals are in there, the expectation is that we as AIOs are in there, that our Curriculum Department is in there. So we are continuously doing them. So even though they've been around for years, I think we are consistently holding to that this year so that we can see what we're doing and see where we can give that assistance and guidance.
I don't think you'll find a district where walkthroughs and learning walks are not being conducted.
And one more, sorry. Nobody else jumping in here? And so, a teacher that, you know, I'm assuming a teacher could experience a walkthrough or a learning walk, you know, several times a week, should they expect to receive feedback every time that they have a walkthrough, or is it more of a, just kind of a consistent feedback process?
Yes, they should be getting feedback, written feedback. I know when we go in, one of the things that we, ours is more for the administrators to work with the teachers to see what we're seeing, but we certainly give ours. Ours doesn't have the teacher names on them, it's just the room number. That was the thing that we had worked out with the union several years ago, not wanting actual names on them since we're at our level. But they should be providing that. I can tell you, actually, she's still in here, Ms. Strong, one day, Ms. Strong had three visitors in her room all in one day, I think. It was me, Ms. Clark, and Dr. Karat, and none of us had it planned, we didn't know it. It was just one of those things where we all ended up showing up because we were all in the same, well, Ms. Clark obviously works there, but for Dr. Karat and I, that was our days, we were in the building. So, it was nothing against Ms. Strong, in fact, she had a great lesson, it was just us being in there. And I will tell you, what we also see allows us to take back and share. When we're seeing great things going on in our buildings, the AIOs and I, we put out weekly newsletters to our principals, and we're able, because sometimes we don't always get to see the best practices taking place in the various buildings, we're able to say, this is what this building is doing, and other principals just kind of, they don't reinvent the wheel, they steal those great ideas and make them their own. So that's also another reason that we like doing them, because we can share those great ideas out.
Thank you.
Do the teachers know they're non-evaluative?
Yes. And we don't use the evaluation forms that are used for the formal evaluations, we actually use learning walk forms so that they know the difference.
Any other question? Is there any central repository for this, the information that you gather so that it can be available to everybody in the district as teachers?
What do you mean by that?
Like a Wikipedia-type knowledge base that says, these are the things that are working under these types of situations?
Only your newsletters.
Right, and our newsletters, I think we share them with Ms. Gershnik, with things, great things we're seeing, so that she can put them out there for the Curriculum Department, especially for mentors, those things that we're seeing. We meet and share those as well, so that we can get those out there. I know we're also building through Chris, when we're seeing these great things, taking pictures, sending little blurbs so that we can get them out there to the teachers so that they can see that. We are working on that to make them more available for staff members.
A perfect example is that the School Improvement Day, that's coming up on Wednesday, teachers who were identified as using, for example, Ms. Thomas, a number of staff from Woodruff with Restorative Justice, and they're experts, and they're really effective with working with kids, they're presenters, a lot of, actually, a number of our staff members will be presenting on Wednesday, and actually, Ms. Gershnik will talk about that today in terms of, again, it's just identifying individuals who are efficient, who are effective, they're doing a nice job, and sharing their wealth with the others. So there's a lot to be attained through that.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you. Alternative learning, optional programming?
Yes, so, there's a lot of, it's a hot topic. That theme about one size does not fit all, it's really appropriate with this topic. We actually had a discussion today where we talked again about the need for alternative optional learning programming for some of our students. I think there's great energy there and some great ideas. Tonight, you'll hear about two proposals that we currently have on the table. I've asked Ms. Stockman to talk with you about proposal for the middle schools, the overaged middle school students. And Mr. Thomas is also here, thank you for coming, Mr. Thomas. He's the principal at the Knoxville Center, which provides alternative programming for some of our kids. So, what do you have to share with us, Ms. Stockman?
Good evening, Board President Ross and board members. We've been looking at a program called Alternative Learning Opportunities Program, or ALFOF. The purpose of the program is to offer a broader range of academics, behavioral, and socially-emotional interventions designed to increase the academic achievement levels of these students so that they are able to meet the Illinois learning standards and complete their education in a safe environment. Who is the program targeting? We're looking at eighth-grade students, those who are considered at academic risk. We've already been collecting data through a couple of our schools for those students that are already struggling in math and language arts. Also, those students seem to be having current interventions that are not working for them, they're getting many referrals, and students are missing many days of school already. Why does this program make a difference? Each student will have a success plan for them. There are small instructional engaging groups, support services to remove barriers, some of the career development experiences to obtain a job, so we're looking to give them soft skills, how to go in and talk with people, dress for interviews, those sort of things during the day. They would get their experience later in the evening or in the afternoon. And then also those socially-emotional learning programs to help them transition into high school, so they would stay with us. And our goal is to get them ready to get into high school, because currently, they're not ready to go to high school, and they're not succeeding in the programs that they are in. And where is the program located? Knoxville Center for Success has been one of the areas that we've looked at. We're also maybe considering Woodruff or Lincoln to see which area meets the program needs the best. And we hope to start the program in December. We've worked with several different team members to get a lot of ideas to see how we can support these students the best. So you can see, we've worked with the lead, ROE, Ms. Elliott, who's here, the AIOs, Dr. Karat, and Carla Eman. Do you have any questions for me? Yes.
Some of these might be for Dr. Karat. First of all, how many students do you anticipate being able to provide services to?
We're looking at between twenty to forty.
Okay. And I know if you decide to put it at Knoxville Center, or actually, Knoxville Center, will their current programs still go on, will it diminish that program at all?
Yeah, so thanks for asking. We have been playing around with the location, and we talked about Knoxville, we're also looking at Woodruff, we're also looking at Lincoln. It would be, we're working with ROE to It would be, we're working with ROE to apply for the ALOP. It's called the ALOP Grants, the Alternative Learning Optional Programming. And you're required to provide three hours of instruction and then two hours of social-emotional sort of activities. And so, we were thinking of the instructional time going from, let's say, three to six, for example. And then the social-emotional time, we would collaborate with individuals in the community, including LEAD. And that, if that is done, for example, Woodruff would be a perfect location, because the current group would be gone by 2:30, right? So, that building would be available. So, Ms. Stockman and I talked about that today, and we brainstormed with Mr. Thomas, but he also has an extended piece. And whatever we do, it would not diminish. And it looks like Woodruff might be a really nice option if everything goes well.
Will there be one person who oversees this or who is in charge of this specific program?
There would be. You don't necessarily need an administrator, but there are a variety of options. You could stagger individuals' times. There are a variety of things that can be utilized. In terms of cost, it's, you know, it's between, what did we say, Ange? Between 25 to 50. And the idea is to keep these kids in school, because for 40 kids, what's the return? 180?
Thousand.
Thousand, in terms of ADA. So, being creative and also meeting needs.
It sounds like there's a possibility there may be a grant available to help cover some of the costs, then.
We talked with possibly using some title dollars for extended day.
Didn't you say something about a grant from the ROE?
Well, actually, it's an application. You have to get permission from the state. So, it's the, it's a grant application that you fill out for them to approve this arrangement.
Okay. Thank you.
You're very welcome. Anything else, Ms. Stockman? Did you forget anything?
Mr. Coy, do you have something?
Yes, with three hours of instruction per day, is this to get caught up? Or is this to maintain current class participation? I mean, how does that work out?
A little bit of both, really. We want to maintain them, but we need them to grow because they are behind. So, we're hoping with the small, we're looking at like 10 students per teacher, but we do need them to grow beyond a year. We have a, we're looking at a set parameter that they have to meet to go on.
And with, this is eighth graders only?
Yes.
Eighth grade only, okay.
Or seventh, seventh and eighth, seventh, and the majority are eighth graders, but there are some really overaged seventh graders.
Okay.
I don't know, how many would you say? Not very many.
Not many, yeah. Majority would be eighth graders.
This is typically targeted at students that are two years or more past what they would be typically at grade?
Fifteen, sixteen in middle school.
Okay. And then, is there any parental involvement component that you anticipate here?
Well, of course, they have to be brought into the process and agreed to the program and helping getting the students there. I mean, attendance is a big part of being in the program, so yes, they will be brought into.
And every family will be visited, and that's ELITE's. ELITE's will be working with us to get them to also sign contracts of attendance.
Lastly, with the hours you're talking about between 3:00 and 6:00 p.m., this creates a little bit of a transportation logistics issue. Is there some way to cut that out, or?
We're looking at bus passes for them to get back and forth to our program.
Okay.
Either that or working out something with ELITE, too. We had a discussion about that. Hetty, and Hetty, actually, we've pulled in Hetty from the community, because she has that background. And ELITE, we've worked with Carl. Carl is on the team and Hetty, and we also did talk about transportation. So, there are a variety of options between bus passes and even using a van.
Yeah, we have to be careful with that.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Butler? Yes, Dr. Karat, you had mentioned Lincoln School as a possibility as a facility as well. What are your thoughts there in considering Lincoln School? The benefits or the potential for that program to work?
We're still exploring. Lincoln was, did not get high marks when we ran through the buildings, because they're still in session. They're there until 3:30. So, that throws that timing off. So, it went way down to the bottom. Woodruff was number one, then Knoxville.
I don't know if people remember, this is really not a new phenomenon. We used to have a program at the Urban League that had the eighth graders that struggled to get through eighth grade and get into high school. And so, it was the overaged young people that, and I'm not sure exactly how they, I think they were self, they self-transported themselves or the parents brought them, just so they would be in school.
They did.
But they did it for years and years, and they were very successful. And I think some of us who actually worked at the Urban League knew when that actually happened.
Well, I was, when I graduated from Bradley, that was my first teaching job. So, I worked with them for about three years. I was a teacher. At the time, we prepared them for the minimal competency examination. They had to pass that in order to move on to high school.
And the neat part about it was that you could bring community people in for that social-emotional piece, that they would be, you know, it would be a well-rounded position, a well-rounded position for the kids to be in, you know? So, they learned how to do a lot of things just by being there. Ms. Jackson?
And I was going to mention, it was at the Urban League, and it was an excellent program, because I helped some families get their children into that to get them caught up so they could go to high school. And I think it's a real great use of energy and time for that.
Well, leaving them in the current school is not successful for them. I mean, these kids, they just need another option. And if you're not ready to learn, then you're going to keep other people from learning as well. So, I think it's a good idea.
And we'll keep you informed regarding that piece, for sure, as we continue to progress along. Ms. Ross, I don't know if you want to make comments around the other Alternative Learning Opportunities idea that you're involved with, with individuals in the community. And that one is dedicated to rehabilitation of delinquent teens. And there's a bus trip to St. Louis that's scheduled November 13th to explore the innovative concept there. Would you like to?
This will be the third trip, really, to St. Louis to take a look at, there's a judge in St. Louis, Judge Edwards. Matter of fact, he will be here this weekend as the, one of the speakers for the NAACP State Conference. And I look forward to sitting down with him. He actually created this, this school. That's nice music. He created this school, and he's the chief judge, so he's in a unique position to have those students who have probation mandated to come to the school, to put them back in school and keep them in school. And so, he's able to tell the juvenile judges to refer kids. And he started out with about, I think, 50 kids, and he's probably up to around 250 now. And people, kids, people want their kids in the, in this school, because, you know, it's just very successful. So, I actually am going to send something out to the board members to see who wants to travel down there, who would like to take the whole day and travel down there and see what they do. But I think it's unique to catch another segment of kids that we can't service right now. Or, you know, we have the, some of the kids going to Knoxville Center that come out of JDC and that kind of thing, but this is an opportunity to separate those kids and give them some specific attention.
And this would be our kids, again, primarily those who've been expelled, and they're connected with the justice system. There are a lot of collaboration, Judge Brady and Judge Corey and Illinois Central College, Ms. Ross, a couple of board members. ELITE is very involved with it. And so, the location, it's looking like, we're also exploring locations, and Carver Center has been, has been mentioned as a possible site.
Any questions? Comments? Thank you, Ms. Stockman. Next on the agenda is?
Ms. Langhoff. She's going to talk to us about new health. Thanks.
I'm Maureen Langhoff. I oversee special education as well as health services in the district. We have Holly Bill, who works for Holt Center, one of our community partners, and Leah Royer, who works for the Center for Prevention of Abuse Children's Home. I always confuse. Marcia Bolden is our rep from the Center for Prevention of Abuse. So, tonight, we're going to give you an, just an update of how the curriculum's going and our rollout of our new health education curriculum. So, 18 months ago, I'm just making sure this is starting. I'll just use this. 18 months ago, we started our work with the Reproductive Health Committee in the city and our community partners, because we are identified as one of the top priority districts in the state of Illinois for our high rates of STIs and teen births. So, we took on the challenge, because we just frankly could not ignore it. It's part of our community, and we have to take on challenges and move right, right forward and do what's right for our kids. So, these are the goals that we're working toward. And I want to go back to, for those of you that have not seen the data, this is the data from 2013. This data is reported directly to the Health Department. So, these are our teen birth rates. Per births, per 1,000 women ages 15 to 19. So, if you look at the disparity between the United States, Illinois, and Peoria County, it's large. It's also broken down into zip code areas. So, United States, Illinois, Peoria County, oh-three, oh-four, oh-five, and remaining Peoria County, for those of you that have not seen this data. It's pretty astounding. The data indicates women 15 to 24, African-American, and in three of the zip code areas that we serve are the highest rates. These are the data reported to the Health Department for cases of gonorrhea. And if you look again at United States versus Peoria County, the three zip code areas and the remaining Peoria County, we have three areas that are very, very high, high need in terms of education and change, in terms of the choices our students are making. This is the data reported regarding chlamydia. So, as part of this project, we're not really calling it a grant, because we haven't gotten any money from the state. We, it's kind of funny, kind of not. We're working on three, three very specific areas. So, the first one is the education that we provide to our students, and that is what we've spent over a year working on revising. The second area is access to key health services, so making sure that our students have health clinics. We have health clinics at Manuel, Tree, Win, and Harrison right now. Our students at Peoria High, they want one. So, I'm going to be coming to all of you in the next two years and trying to find space at Peoria High to build an in-school health clinic. Carla? They want one. They actually stated to our senators in Springfield in April that they didn't think it was right, that Manuel had an in-school health clinic and Peoria High didn't. So, they're sticking up for themselves, and they really want one. The third area is safe and supportive environment. So, as part of this, many of you met our Youth Advisory Council last year, our students who, they're, I don't get to spend a lot of one-on-one time with kids in this role, which is okay, because that's part of my job, but I really love the time that I've been able to spend with students, talking about how we're going to teach them, to teach their peers, to start changing choices in Peoria, to make an impact on this data. So, we really are just trying to tap right into those students and encourage them to start speaking up, to represent. A shortened version, these are the areas we've been working on in terms of rolling this out. We trained two staff members from 16 schools that have sixth through ninth grade. Because of staff and the capacity that we have this year, we are, have the comprehensive piece in sixth, seventh, eighth, and ninth grade. We hope to expand it, but this year, we started with sixth through ninth grade. We pre-tested sixth graders across the entire district, and we're hoping by the time those students get into high school, we're going to see less teen births and STIs among those students. As we've gotten into schools, we've been at three schools. Holly and Leah can tell you a little bit about their work in the schools. We've noticed, it's gone very well. We don't have a lot of opt-outs. We have less than 25 across the whole district. I think as we move forward, one of the main areas is each principal, depending on the population they serve and the parents that they have, will make the decision in terms of, you know, like, for example, I spoke at a faculty meeting at Washington Gifted, and Mr. Poles requested that, and I was there because he requested that. In some buildings, staff members have more questions, and in others, there's not as high of a need to inform parents. But I would say that as we move forward in the next couple of years, we want more opportunities to speak with parents as well, because they are our first, our first teachers. Here's our partners, community partners. The work that the county reproductive health committee has done is just awesome. I do feel like this is the strongest we've been in many, many years in the city of Peoria. So, we've come a long way, and we're not going away. We'll be here for a long time. So, we absolutely could not do this without, without the partnerships. All right, I'm going to have Holly and Leah talk about the curriculum.
Good evening. I'm Holly Bill at the Holt Center for Healthy Living, and I was just going to quickly walk you through some of the lessons that we are presenting to the sixth, seventh, eighth, and I think ninth is listed on here as well. We're doing a couple of lessons with the ninth grade as our resources allow us to. So, this is the sixth grade, and it's, it's taken from the FLYSH curriculum, which we updated at the last board meeting that we were present at. But just to give you an idea, puberty, hygiene, we go off of the National Learning Standards on what is, what we're teaching at what grade level. Abstinence, of course, is present in every presentation, but we try and make a really big deal out of it, at at least one lesson per grade level. Reproduction, pregnancy, just understanding the whole, you know, reproductive system and how pregnancy starts and happens. HIV and AIDS and decision-making. And then every, every grade level will have an Aaron's Law component, so just learning about safety, safe touch, that sort of thing. And that's by the Center for Prevention of Abuse. Seventh grade, you can take a look. I won't read them all. And ninth grade. So, you can see, we're only giving three lessons in ninth grade now, because we're focusing our efforts in the sixth grade at this time. So, we hope to expand that more as we can. As Maureen said, we are pre- and post-testing the students, as many students as we can. We did pre-test all of the sixth-grade students, and we've pre- and post-tested most of the students that we've seen in seventh and eighth, as long as we've had times. We've had a couple hiccups where maybe schedule ran over or something like that, but for the most part, we're trying to pre- and post-test most of the students. You can see the knowledge questions for each of the grade levels, and then the behavior. And the behavior is intended behavior, so it's self-reporting, you know, are they more likely to get tested? Do they feel more comfortable with some of the resources that we have in Peoria, that sort of thing? So, obviously, we can't see them actually going to get tested or that, but it's just their kind of self-reported behaviors.
So, you said post-test, where is the, what is the pre-test?
You know, I didn't put it on here. I can certainly provide that to you. I have it.
I was just wondering how you, what were you measuring it?
Sure.
You can share the pre-test data.
I can. We have a very big spreadsheet with that, and I didn't want to put too much information up there, but we do have all of that data. And we are presenting that, too, to the Reproductive Health Committee and the Peoria County Health Department. So, they're on board with that as well. So, they're on board with that as well to kind of watch this. They also are the ones that helped us create and approve the pre- and post-test. So, they've seen it.
So, this slide... Excuse me. Are you saying that safe testing sixth graders, 64% has the knowledge, but then the behavior is intended behavior?
Sure. Yes. Or maybe it's confidence. We kind of group those together. It's pretty difficult to gauge behavior on this, like I said, because we can't actually watch them get tested. Of course, our true behavior is going to be years down the road when we actually hopefully see these rates decrease. But this kind of gives us a temporary, are we making a difference just day by day or year by year? And then these sixth graders that will be pre- and post-tested, then we can track them each year as they go through the program.
We also have three of our students presenting Wednesday night at one of the Reproductive Health Committee panels, Wednesday night down at UIC. I believe that's the name of the building. There's a potential of 40 to 80 local healthcare providers that will be in attendance, and we're going to start addressing some of those citywide issues. For example, many of the patients seen go to the emergency rooms instead of other healthcare providers. There's many big things out of our scope here, but that impact the community. Healthcare providers and the way they treat, and if they can talk about contraception, for example, is a big issue. So, we're really to the point where we're moving citywide, where we're really going to be able to start making some change, you know, being in that zone of real system change, I believe.
I also just want to point out that this is the result of three schools? Two schools. So, that's actually... Our target for knowledge is about 80... Is 85%, so it's low. But considering this is our very first year and our very first two schools, and we're really just piloting, kind of trying these lessons out, we're actually really proud of those numbers. So, it's hard to do the lessons, you know, brand-new teachers in the rooms and do the pre- and post-test data, keeping the kids' attention, so.
What's disheartening is that what I hear you saying is that 84% of seventh graders have the knowledge, and then they still decide to have negative behaviors. So, I mean, that... Really, it's... I'm just wondering, is this true data?
Sure.
And this is a small group, so we'll keep you posted on the post-test.
Because I don't want, you know, you look... These graphs of 61, 605, oh-three, oh-four, and...
Behavior is always the tougher one to judge, and we only actually have a 50% goal on behavior because that's... It's really difficult to see that change in just a short amount of time, right? We're only with the students for six lessons. And so, our goal there is 50%, which... So, those numbers are great for us, actually. But I can see where you're coming in, and not... Those knowledge don't always relate directly to the behavior either, so.
So, the higher the behavior number, the better or the worse?
The better.
The better.
Yes.
There's also... When we talk about behavior, it's sort of a two-pronged thing. It's, you know, this is how likely are you to use a condom? If you are or think you're going to engage in sexual intercourse, how likely are you to use a condom? But the second piece to that is they have to have access. And so, you know, it's a two-pronged thing. We bring them the information, sort of try to educate them on, you know, the risks based on what we just showed you. I try to share that with students and seek to help them have that information. But then, in order for them to actually make those good choices, they also do have to have access to, you know, they have to have access to condoms. They have to understand their rights under the law, that they do have access to birth control, contraception. And so, it's sort of a bigger piece than just giving them the information and hoping that they'll change their behavior. We also have to arm them with the ability to do that, other than those students who are choosing to not to be abstinent.
So, you really can't... At this point in time, you really can't... I hear what you're saying, but you really can't measure the behavior.
No.
We're very early on.
Yeah. So, it just looks bad, but...
Yeah. And so, this is some of the feedback that we received from students.
So, that, knowledge and behavior, it really just gives us an idea of where to go next, right? What else do we need to really focus on next year? How do we need to build that curriculum? So...
Ms. Butler has a question.
I thought I saw three schools up there, but you said it's only two that you...
Sure. We're currently in Lincoln School right now, so we haven't actually post-tested those students. We will post-test some, I think, on Thursday is when our date is.
And Von Steuben?
Von Steuben and Washington have been completed.
Correct. I guess I'm wondering, what's going on in 61, 605, since that was your highest rate? That there's...
That's what I was wondering. Where'd they got the data from?
Where'd they get the... Or why? Where are you in regards to where the greatest need?
Well, they got the original data from there.
Yeah. No, I'm just saying, I didn't see a school from 61, 605.
Correct. So, the way that we planned it out for the district is we just started with a couple of pilot schools, and then we were going to move, just because it takes a little while to get those lessons, kind of where we think they should be, you know, tweaking some of the activities that we do in there. So, we started with a couple different schools that we thought we had pretty good relationships with the students already, and then we're going to move into the oh-three, oh-four, oh-five schools. So, but eventually, we'll see them all, too. So, we just kind of spaced them out. That was easiest for our community partners.
When do you think you'll get to 61, 605?
You know, I don't have the schedule.
The whole school year is mapped out.
We have the entire district planned already, so.
And the plan is also on the district website. But I can share the information with you as well in terms of the entire plan. But literally, it's day by day across the whole district for the entire year. It takes a lot of manpower also and staff members to be in the schools and...
But again, I was just wondering, when do you go to the area that show a great need? 61, 605?
Well, in the next several weeks, where Harrison, Roosevelt, Sterling, I believe.
Sterling is next week, yeah.
We're starting.
Is this program paid for through the district?
It's paid for...
By different grants from different community partners. Every community partner has their different avenues that they're...
So, you collaborated on this grant? Okay.
Yeah. We haven't received any additional people or money for it, and we chose the FLYSH curriculum because it's free.
So, each time that we are ending a different lesson or depending on different grade level, we have been collecting student feedback, either through just dialogue if we have the time. A lot of times, we, you know, it's crunched, but... Or this is some... These came from some written feedback forms that we had collected. So, I just put a couple of different quotes out here that I thought stood out. You know, we get good, we get bad, but we can also take that information back to the committee and use that to help guide our curriculum, what they want to learn more about, what they don't want to learn more about, what they find most beneficial to them. So, a couple, learning STIs makes me... Learning about STIs makes me want to protect myself more. I learned about birth control and the types that would be most convenient for me. I think during that conversation, I remember some of the girls saying, "Gosh, I didn't realize there were this many choices of birth control." You know, they just think of the things that they see advertised on TV. So, that's good. And you should pass out male condoms to everyone, just in case. We get a lot of those requests. The students want to know where they can get them. Why aren't they available in the schools? And I think right now, that's just principal-dependent, really. So, that was some of them. I think there's a couple more on there. Okay. And this particular program, they said the program helped me not to judge people. The sexual orientation and gender stereotype has been really great in helping students see that, you know, we're not supposed to be placing people in certain boxes or stereotypes. We've had a lot of good discussion with that. It's taught us that it's okay to talk to your partner about things, so. We've had some really good feedback, so we'll continue to collect that and share that.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Is this your program?
Yes.
Thank you.
Maybe two more. Dr. Lyman is next. Welcome. And she's here with her husband, David. It's been a while since I've seen both of you. Dr. Lyman is a professor at Illinois State University, has written several books, and she's really very interested in this theme that I've kind of picked up this evening regarding focusing on the whole child and this thing about emotional and cognitive. Those two are really intertwined when it comes to being successful for our kids.
Thank you.
So, she... We had a conversation, and I asked her to just share with us. She's written a book, and the title is Leadership of Stages of Mind.
Actually, Brain Science for Principles.
Brain Science.
Excuse me. It's the name of the book. Leadership for Stages of Mind is the name of the course that I teach.
Oh, okay. All right. And I was really intrigued by that course, and it's an unexplored area, would you say, Dr. Lyman?
Definitely.
And so, can you just share a little bit in terms of what you've found out from a theoretical standpoint, research standpoint, and maybe what we can do to even get better around, again, educating the whole child?
I'm happy to share the remarks that I prepared, and I think that those topics are certainly covered, and I would be happy to take questions. It's really interesting if you don't talk for an hour and a half. Apparently, you were. I haven't had enough practice legally coming to board meetings. I was a board of education member in Nebraska for seven years, so I understand the process. And I thank you very much for inviting me to share some thoughts about leadership for stages of mind. The recent educational neuroscience findings about learning in the brain are important for everyone to understand. Outer space is not the only frontier. It really is maximizing the human brain. That is a largely uncharted frontier of discovery, especially as a result of the new imaging techniques, especially the functional MRIs. We've learned more about the brain in the last 10 years than in all previous years combined. Neuroplasticity is the big word here. I could have talked about neurogenesis and neurodiversity, but the foundation of the discoveries that will be making more and more of an impact on education is neuroplasticity. It's the most widely accepted conclusion of neuroscience research, and it is relevant whatever a person's age or stage of mind. The ever-changing or moldable or malleable nature of the brain is what neuroplasticity means, and it actually provides great hope, I think, for teachers and for learners. What does it mean to say you have learned something? Before I engaged on this pursuit of information about neuroscience, I would have said something completely different. From a neuroscience perspective, contemporary definitions of learning are that learning causes a change that is physical in your brain. So, that's a neuroscience definition of learning. It's a physical change in your brain. When you are learning something, some of your brain cells establish connections with other brain cells through synapses, and together, these brain cells form a new network of cells that did not exist before. So, the new network of cells is what the learning is regarded as being. It's kind of a different way of thinking about learning. The process actually involves chemicals, electricity, thoughts, and emotions as neurons, as they say, fire and wire together. Neuroscience research has also established that learning literally weaves emotion into cognition. As one of my favorite neuroscientists writes, "We think in service of emotional goals." We think in service of emotional goals. It's really biologically close to impossible to think without feeling or vice versa. Every decoded word, every attempted math problem, just like every lunchtime conversation, is experienced subjectively and evaluated emotionally, even though sometimes we're actually unaware of these feelings. The most important implication of neuroplasticity, and this is not just my opinion, is that intelligence is not fixed at birth. As a culture, we have believed for, you know, for over 100 years that intelligence was fixed at birth. The research surrounding the discoveries of the neuroplasticity of the brain have rendered that an undefensible position. Recent findings about learning in the brain then, as you see, have changed the definition of learning and the definition of intelligence, thereby opening up a limitless frontier. The new brain science discoveries show that individuals younger and older can indeed shape their intelligence. Believing that intelligence is fixed at birth is a form of deficit thinking that has limited far too many lives. Neuroplasticity means that the brain at any age or stage can be permanently changed in relation to specific, well-planned learning experiences. Educators who know about neuroplasticity are viewing teaching and learning through a new lens. The positive face of neuroplasticity is that the brain changes throughout life through interaction with experiences. At the same time, however, neuroplasticity has a negative face. The same brain that can change and grow positively throughout life can also be changed negatively, especially by repeated trauma and chronic stress. Chronic stress is associated with being trapped in an unrelenting, miserable, hopeless situation, such as homelessness, poverty, violence in home. Traumatic events are typically unexpected, fast-paced events that are over quickly that induce emotional pain that recurs. The high cortisol levels produced by trauma and chronic stress are damaging to the body and to the brain. They have huge consequences for learning. In terms of brain structure and chemistry, there are three overall effects of chronic stress and childhood trauma, and these are developmental stagnation, behavior problems, and physiological changes in the brain. Developmental stagnation, behavior problems, and physiological changes in the brain. And if you just even think about it superficially, these are all emotionally interconnected. The limbic system located deep in the brain functions as the emotional core of the brain. And I apologize for the oversimplification, but that's the only way I could talk about it in 10 minutes. Chronic stress particularly affects two parts of the limbic system, the hippocampus and the amygdala. And the hippocampus are these little sort of seahorse-shaped things. There's two of them, and there's an amygdala on either side of the brain also. Chronic stress particularly affects the hippocampus and the amygdala. The hippocampus has a major role in learning, in the encoding and storage of long-term memories, which typically happens when we sleep. Chronic stress, however, can shrink the hippocampus by actually killing neurons, thereby making it a less effective organ for encoding long-term memories. The amygdala actually functions as a gatekeeper. When the amygdala senses threat or high stress, it becomes overactivated and goes into survival mode. High activity in the amygdala blocks the entry of information to the thinking brain. Let's think about it a minute. Blocks the passage of information, whatever the information is, into the thinking brain. In other words, anything that puts a child or an adult, a teenager, into survival mode is shutting down learning. And what puts us into survival mode? Fear, stress, feeling threatened, not, not feeling safe. The high activity in the amygdala then, over time, can cause the amygdala to enlarge. The fight, freeze and freeze, fight, flight, and freeze behaviors are at the center of beha, behavioral issues in schools. And I'm not telling you anything by, by saying that. The, the freeze behavior is a little harder, maybe it's in vision, but it, that's the zoned-out kid, you know, the dozing kid, the not paying attention kid. Uh, we know what fights are like and, and we know what flight leads, leads to. It's also running away from, from learning, uh, but um the, the root of, of behavioral issues in schools for sure. Students who have suffered trauma can move instantly into the hyper-arousal mode because they actually react differently to the amygdala's registering a threat or fear because it's been happening for such a long time. The traumatized brain can interpret even a small loss or rejection as a new traumatic event and then the amygdala really shifts into overdrive and fight or flight urges are reactivated. When a child or youth lives with trauma over time, the hyperactive, stressed, and often enlarged amygdala can become the new normal. This can result in repeated impulsive decisions, verbal or physical aggression, self-harm, and other travel, other troubling behaviors. So introductory remarks, but hopefully of interest. In conclusion, young brains can be shaped in positive ways by neuroscientifically literate principals and teachers. Or young brains can remain forever marked by trauma and chronic stress. I believe that hope is kindled through programs that support social and emotional learning. Mentioned here this evening, mentioned uh in terms of plans the district has for a social and emotional learning program or office. The restorative justice practices that were in the news at, at Woodruff are certainly an example of the kinds of, of practices that keep hope alive. And to me, they certainly show that the district is heading in the right direction. Recent findings of educational neuroscience are calling students, teachers, principals, administrators, and I would add board members in at least three directions. First, to understand the brain and how it learns. Second, to understand that the brain is an organ of emotion. And third, to abandon the outdated belief that intelligence is fixed at birth. All three have implications for policy, for principal leadership, and for classroom teaching. Schools that engage students positively at the emotional and social levels can then enhance learning at the cognitive level. Knowing how the brain works is truly, I believe, the key to the future of education. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions of Dr. Lyman? So good to see you again.
It's nice to see you too.
Bradley, one of them. I learned so much. I was always fascinated by these, these types of uh learning. Anybody? What? Comments?
I don't have a question, but I really appreciate your remarks because it gives you a lot to think about. I don't think, when you stop and think about our children and you talk about the repetitive trauma that, that can stop the learning, that's certainly what a lot of our children are going through, whether it's homelessness or, or no parent at home or fear or whatever. So it really gives you a new pers, gives me a new perspective on what's going on with a lot of our children. So I appreciate very much.
Even poverty is-
I, I guess, I, and I'm, I'm sure eventually I'll get this, on how all that's going to integrate into dealing with the whole child, uh with the district and, and what that means for our children, uh on a wholly different level, uh an entirely different level. And I'm excited about looking at that whole thing and seeing what happens.
Well, this particular book is about three week, three weeks away from going to the, the publisher, so I'll be eager to see it uh in print. I've actually worked with students in this class called Leadership for Stages of Mind uh and these master students have done the research for the twenty-four chapters in the book. And um I found a publisher, you know, I've written pieces of the book, consulted with a neuroscientist from Chicago. So I, I think, you know, this will be one book that definitely would be a, a source and there are, there are others.
There's one question I would ask, though. Does, the teachers only have the students so long during the school day? And I heard you say, I think I heard you say something to the effect that uh the smallest negative can destroy the learning. So what happens when they're at home or when they go back to the trauma or whatever that they came from? I know there's a lot of trauma in school, too.
I think um what it reaffirms is the power of the climate of a school. It may be the only safe space that a child or a middle schooler teenager experiences. And I think, you know, then with good educational practices, uh hope can stay alive for children. That's, it, it is really why the school climate is, is just so important.
Yeah, I guess, not quite sure how to phrase this, but can a school environment overcome the repeated and, and obvious failure on the part of the household to protect that child?
Um, not, not easily, but I, I do know, for example, that school counselors are now being educated about neurotherapy and there have been successful, uh, it's kind of like a retraining of the wiring and firing that can be accomplished through some technological processes that the brain then, you know, works to match what it, what it artificially understood as a way to feel. I, I probably don't have any business trying to talk about that, but K-Crap, which credits school counseling programs, has now made the ability to do neurotherapy a part of its standards for, for counselors graduating to work in schools. So I think that's at least one access for some children who are, you know, severely brain traumatized to get help. And I think there will be more and more evidence as we understand more and more about the brain that these are things that can be, that, that can be improved in terms of, the, the brain can be changed in many ways and, and this is certainly a vast part of the new frontier, how to, how to repair the, the damages.
Thank you.
Mr. Bush?
I just wanted to add that in one of my previous roles, I'm a, I like to read. Um, so I worked, I walked um my work group through a study of a book called The Brain Advantage, uh How Leaders Can Lead Their Organizations Using Neuroplasticity. And it's, it, it was a fascinating group discussion and, and to echo or maybe trail on how a child learns. It also showed in, in The Brain Advantage book, um how adults can learn differently as well. Um, so if you go out and buy that and get an introduction as we wait the three weeks until the book comes out.
Did you write that one?
I, it was, it, it's fascinating science.
Yeah, I'm always interested in this kind of stuff. I went through the Pacific Institute with Lou Tice, uh, you know, re, re, rewriting the, the screens, uh, the tapes, rewriting the tapes, and that was just exciting to me. Did you have something, Dr. Karat, you wanted to say?
No, I um, actually, Dr. Lyman, I thought this was really intriguing, as I thought it would be, and um following Dr. Lyman, Susan will come up. Um, as a district, Ms. Jackson sort of kind of referenced it, and Ms. Wolfmy, you, you're just so correct in terms of the comments that you made. But as a district, we're, we're intrigued in, in, in really being effective with our kids and not only focused on academics, but also that other socially emotional side. And so we referenced the School Improvement Day that's coming up and we're exploring a lot more about the brain and emotions and so what's, what's scheduled for Wednesday?
First of all, let's thank Dr. Lyman for coming up and presenting to us. I really appreciate that. Okay, Susan?
All right. Well, um, is this on here? On Wednesday, our entire instructional staff will focus on social, emotional learning as it relates to working with children. So our purpose in focusing on this is with respect to how, knowing the huge impact that positive relationships have on academic achievement. Uh, students thrive academically in well-supported environments, just as we just heard. So our focus on this day is on what we can do as adults with our behavior to help students with their behavior. So if you take a look, uh, what we have on our website, uh, we have teachers and administrators registering right now for sessions and Chris, I don't know if you, yeah. Um, so I thought I'd share this story with you, or Chris's rather. These are learning sessions that are going to be presented by our staff for our staff. And so as um Ravanda said earlier about um, we're identifying where our positives are and then we're approaching folks and saying, hey, you know, come out as a teacher leader and share what you know and share what's going well. And so we have over forty sessions, if not more now, um focused on social, emotional learning as it relates to different components of our curriculum. And we have some outside partners as well, Easter Seals, and we have a little more Y-Try coming as well, um just to kind of keep those pieces moving forward. Um, and so you see, we have a, a wide variety of topics, so people could pick what was most engaging or interesting to them and what they felt would impact their learners. Um, so we're pretty excited about this. I think this takes the PLC concept to a larger level, the district-wide level, and it's something that I think that periodically we need to do because there really are some great things happening and we can learn so much from one another because we have similar children across the district. So I want to thank the teaching and learning team who put this together, Chris and um Joni and Michelle especially, they've been helping me so much and Chief Collins and his team, as well as Michelle Siple and her team have helped to make. This is a huge venture to get over thirteen hundred staff members uh into a fully focused learning opportunity.
It's based on best practice. It's all differentiated, so they can pick and choose. Great job, team.
Any questions of Ms. Coach Nuss? Thank you, Susan.
I like it because it's by our staff, for our staff. So we're not going out to get people to do things that our staff can do.
Right. Report of requests under the Freedom of Information Act.
Yes, President Ross, uh, since our last board meeting, report on October thirteenth, we've received three new requests. Um, of those new requests, none were filled. Um, there, there was three pending, there were three pending requests and uh two of those pending requests were filled. And let's see, so far we've received ninety-three requests for the calendar year and the running total is two thousand six hundred fifty-five, fifty-eight dollars and eighty-nine cents. That's the cost to provide these requests today.
Thank you. Proposed expenditures over twenty-five hundred dollars. Any questions of Mr. Bush?
I would just note for the board that I've reviewed each and these appear all normal and customary, so.
Okay, thank you.
I would have a, just a question on the administrative process for our purchasing policy and the process of doing that. I know we talked about that briefly before and is that working okay and are you seeing functional issues? Are you, are you satisfied with it or are we still in early days here?
I, I think we're still in the early days and um uh it's sort of a who moved my cheese point right now where there is some early frustration and, and a lot of clarity uh being generated at the school level, at the building level. I mean, people obviously want to know what they need to do different, so they're in compliance. Um, and there's a central point that those questions are being answered and as quickly as they can be answered, uh but the rollout is, is going district-wide. As with any new process, the hiccups are uh in the beta stage and I, I don't see anything from keeping it from rolling out in due process.
I would just say that uh as, as we get some experience with this toward the end of the year, if there are things that just obviously need to be fixed in terms of policy, we need to hear back on those and, and don't assume that we're just going to sit here and sort of fold our arms and say, well, live with it. If we can find a way to make it right and to do it in a way that is administratively clean uh and makes it easier for folks to do their jobs, we need to understand that so that we just don't go charging ahead and make everybody sort of feel like we haven't responded to that.
Sure. I, I think what we've heard most is um how users are interacting with Skyward and, and how Skyward's interacting with users.
Yep.
And uh obviously that's our central database system and, and user interface on how the purchasing uh gets entered, uh how it's channeled and routed and then ultimately reviewed, approved and processed.
Okay.
Uh, so as people become more comfortable with where uh those are at in the stage of their own internal interest or their own individual interest, I mean, um, you'll get more comfort with that. Like I said, though, we're, we're at the, the who moved my-
Right.
-cheese stage.
Well, it's, it's, it's a challenge. It's a significant change and I know the uh, the IT folks and the, the people that were working on that had, had a lot to do to get that put in place, so I think we appreciate the fact that it doesn't happen instantly with a snap of the fingers. You have to work through it and hopefully people will bear with us while that gets done, so. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
In terms of Mr. Cloyds, I think it's a seamless transition for me. Um, I get a lot of items that I have to approve, but it's very good because then I can ask questions about why do we need a new vehicle or um, you know, what's this all about? And you, you have to almost stay on top of, of the um, the items almost on a daily basis. Otherwise, there could be a backlog, but um I appreciate the process personally because then I have a better sense of our finances and what we're spending money on and if it's necessary.
That was the goal.
Um, the consent agenda. Mr. Cloyds?
Oh, yes, thank you. Uh, the consent agenda this evening consists of the following. Gifts to the school district at this meeting, one thousand seven hundred and seventy-two dollars and year-to-date forty-three thousand three hundred and eleven dollars and seventy-five cents. The proposed action is the following. Donations to be accepted in letters of appreciation sent to the donors. Uh, products valued at two hundred dollars by Azir, Peer Education, Manual Academy, two hundred dollars cash by Territorio de Leve to Woodrow Wilson. Uh, school supplies valued at two hundred and fifty dollars by Saint Mark Lutheran Church to Markville School and dinner valued at eleven hundred and twenty-two dollars by Hickory River Smokehouse to the Washington Gifted Middle School for the Parent University and thank them for that, all of them. Number two, payment of bills. Item number three, the Human Resources report, the proposed action is the appointment, employment, compensation, performance, resignation, retirement, or discharge of employee. Number five, payment for travel, I'm sorry, number four, payment for travel. Number five, in-school health care services agreement. The proposed action is that the Board of Education approve an in-school health care services agreement with Unity Health Methodist to provide health centers at three schools in the district, Manual Academy, Harrison School, and TruWin through June thirty, twenty sixteen. The district will compensate Unity Point Methodist two thousand two hundred, two thousand, sorry, let's try that again, two hundred and twenty thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars to be paid out of the Illinois Department- that again, $220,320 to be paid out of the Illinois Department of Human Services grant, Title I grant, and federal special ED IDEA grant funds. Number six, renewal of reinsurance for all employees. The proposed action is that the Board of Education accept renewal option one from HM Life for specific and aggregate medical and prescription reinsurance in the amount of $1,016,219 for the 2016 plan year. Item number seven, ACT contract. The proposed action is that the Board of Education enter into an agreement with ACT to deliver assessments to all interested and eligible 11th and 12th grade students on April 19, 2016. The total cost will range from $33,496 to $37,446, depending on total participation. In the Invetta State Budget is passed, and the Illinois State Board of Education, the ISBE, procures a contract to deliver a college entrance exam. ACT will not charge the district and move the testing date to the state testing date. That concludes the consent agenda, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Cloyds. Are there any items that a board member removed for a separate vote? Okay. Seeing now, may I have a motion?
Second.
Any discussion on any of the items? Questions?
Mr. Bush, can you speak to the, I guess, the question I raised about the care services agreement and the reinsurance, how they compared to last year?
Yes, sir, thank you. On the item number six, which is the health care services contract with Unity Point, that would be a 4% increase from the prior year with no change in scope. And $170,000 of that $220,000 is paid out of the IDEA grant, as noted. Said another way, if we weren't awarded the IDEA grant, we wouldn't be able to have those services available. On the health insurance contract, actually, the cost is going down this year. There are fewer covered lives, but the Health Insurance Committee did review what they wanted covered, and this was their recommendation. So the expense is actually going down from 1.5 million last year to 1.3 this year.
Could you, no, go ahead. I was going to ask, actually, to explain fewer covered lives. What does that mean?
How many people are, is the plan actually?
So it's not really gone down, it's just that we've lost some people?
It's a combination of both, I would say.
Ms. Penn?
There's fewer covered lives in this year's renewal, reinsurance renewal. And the question from the board was, is it's not really that the plan cost has come down, it's that there's fewer people? And I, my response was that it's a combination of both.
It's a combination of multiple things. One of those is that you are increasing the liability in the contract to $275,250. Covered lives, that would be part of it as well. They look at multiple things. They look at the health of the group when they contract. Their liability is that they're going to have to pay out reinsurance plans.
Okay. Does that mean that the staff person will have to pay more because we went up on the liability from 250 to 275?
No, actually, that brings your fixed costs down.
Correct.
As far as what you pay to the reinsurance carrier, what you guys charge the employees is a separate piece. That's about your fixed funding. This is about the insurance that protects your maximum liability and gives you that reinsurance coverage.
Question would be, and this may not be readily available. In how many instances did our liability exceed the deductible last year?
In the 2014 plan year?
Yes.
Or in the current year?
Whatever is most current.
Okay, most current, there is only one individual that has what we call a Pierce spec, which means that they've actually hit that $250,000, as of current, January 1st of 2015 through today.
And then the prior year, how many were there?
There were a lot in the prior year. I don't remember the specific number of people. I want to say, do you remember how many people actually hit the 250?
Eleven or something like that.
I think it was 11, but we had it at 200,000 at that point. In 2014, your specific deductible was the 200,000.
Okay.
And so it's 250, or yeah, 250. I will say that in 2014 plan year, we saw something that I've never seen with your group. And it was just, I mean, just a very interesting phenomenon. We saw where in the months of basically the last quarter, in essence, the basically the last quarter of the 2014 plan year, we had a high number of people that hit $100,000 in claims or more. And they were not on the radar at all in medical management. We just saw like, you know, strokes, heart attacks, issues with babies that no one expected to be issued with, et cetera. So we didn't see all of those, but I think it was like eight that actually hit. But you had a high number of people, and we've never seen that in your group in like a decade. It just was a one-off.
One can only speculate as to the root cause of that. However, what this means is if there's a medical claim that exceeds $275,000, then this covers all of that excess above that amount in each instance.
Correct.
And there's no limit on the number of instances, then?
Correct.
There's no limit on the number of instances, as long as it's covered in the policy?
Right, it's unlimited, right. And then you've got exactly, yes, for the specific, that is exactly right.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions on the, no? Okay. Would you please, I'm sorry?
Yes, I'm sorry. Just for the purposes of putting on the record, Dr. Karat, could you briefly talk about the ACT testing situation there that's in item number seven? There's no controversy involved, it just is a good thing to have an explanation, perhaps?
Sure. Well, it is an important assessment for kids who are thinking of going on to college. It's an examination that is sort of a requirement as a criteria, or in addition to grades and applications, you have to have either an SAT score, an ACT score. And this has happened in our district traditionally. We have, juniors have always taken the ACT. Students have always taken the ACT during their junior year. And the district have always picked up the cost of that. The state has assisted with it. And with Park, there is the idea that Park will sort of replace the ACT. And there's this jostling back and forth. And we all know Park is not ready. It's still sort of being refined. And so ACT was prematurely thrown out of the window. And many schools realized, many districts realized, hey, you know, we really need this thing until Park is solidified. And so we'd like to continue to provide that opportunity for our juniors, especially the ones that are really going on seriously, thinking of, they're motivated, inspired, to go into a four-year college, and they're going to need this piece of evidence to show that they're prepared. And it's also used for scholarships and that sort of thing. So I don't know, Susan and Dr. Zaleski, would you like to add any additional information to that?
Um, okay.
Dr. Zaleski has been working with ACT directly. When we came on, actually, we were scheduled to take SAT. I don't know why. Because of our region, it's an ACT region. And so we sort of had to work diligently, quickly with the company to get back on their calendar. That was a tedious process. And Dr. Z has been successful, so why don't you take it away?
Sure, yeah. So, good evening. My name's Dr. Diana Zaleski. I'm the Director of Accountant Building Research. And so, yes, we've been working diligently with ACT to make sure that all of our high schools are prepared to administer this assessment to interested and eligible 11th grade students. The hope is that there is some legislation currently that is requiring an entrance, a college entrance exam for the state. However, because of the budget impasse, the Illinois State Board of Education has not been able to acquire that contract because the contract last year ended with ACT that we had as a state. And so that went out to bid. And so because of the budget, they have not been able to finalize that bidding process to acquire an entrance exam. So the hope is that as soon as the budget is finalized, that the state will quickly act on that, and we will not have to pay that money to administer the ACT assessment. But we want to make sure that our students have the opportunity to take the assessment free of charge, so we can assist them moving forward in their college and careers.
So as I understand it, last year, all juniors took the ACT?
That's correct.
And this year, it is their option or their choice?
So it's a optional choice, yep.
So you expect that fewer will be taking it this year than prior years?
We do. We're not sure, the counselors are working with them, but there's some that are moving directly to employment, for example.
Right.
Or they're going on to a junior college. There's no need necessarily, there's some of them that would sit through it just because it's a compliance thing and just bubble-seal all the way through. We want the ones, it will be open to, as Doc mentioned, they're interested and they're motivated, and they're going to use the information to take them to the next level. We will support them in that manner.
And then if a student wanted to take the SAT as well, it would be on their own?
That's correct.
On their own funding?
Yep. So this is very traditional. Nothing has really changed for us as a district, probably just being much, much more discreet about participation. And we're listening to the kids, too, and their families.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Didn't it used to be embedded in the ISAT?
It, yes.
At the junior level? So that's why all students used to take it, is because it was actually part of the ISAT?
Right, thank you, Ms. Wolf-Meyer. It's, no, right.
Yeah.
Right. And it was, it was actually called PSAE.
Right.
So the first day was ACT, and the second day were keys, so there were two components. But you're absolutely correct. Should have mentioned that. Thank you. That's good.
Any other questions on the consent agenda? We have a motion in a second. Would you please call a roll?
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Mr. Cloyds?
Aye.
Mrs. Tastic? Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mrs. Wolf-Meyer?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Six ayes, motion here.
Deliberation agenda, expulsions, Mr. Adler?
Expulsions, the proposed action is that the expulsions listed on the report dated October 26, 2015, be approved as amended.
Anybody?
I was second.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Mr. Cloyds?
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mrs. Wolf-Meyer?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Six ayes, motion here.
Expulsions with the expulsion to be held in abeyance. The proposed action is that the expulsions, with the expulsion held in abeyance, listed on the report dated October 26, 2015, be approved as amended.
Second.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Mr. Cloyds?
Aye.
Mrs. Tastic? Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mrs. Wolf-Meyer?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Revocation of abeyance. Proposed action, that the revocation of abeyance listed on the report dated October 26, 2015, be approved as presented.
Second.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Mr. Cloyds?
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mrs. Wolf-Meyer?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Six ayes, motion here.
Revocation of board probation. The proposed action, that the revocation of board probation listed on the report dated October 26, 2015, be approved as presented.
Second.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Mr. Cloyds?
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mrs. Wolf-Meyer?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Six ayes, motion here.
Okay. Presentations and suggestions by board members. Ms. Jackson?
Madam President, I didn't get a chance to do this prior, but I'd like to really congratulate our teachers that made, got all the awards and the fact that Tabitha Hannah Lewis is the Teacher of the Year, and I think that's just wonderful for the district. But I'm sorry, the Can Do people left because I have several paintings in my house from the Can Do. My sons gave them to me as Christmas gifts, and they're wonderful. They look great on my walls. And those donations bought, helped a lot of children, so Can Do is a wonderful thing.
Yeah, sounds. Other suggestions, presentations by board members?
I have a suggestion. I believe there were some issues that we were going to take up with the Public Building Commission, and I believe that due to the change in the financial officer, some of that was put on hold. And I wonder if we could go back and track on what those might have been and see if that can be restarted. I think that had to do with some of the properties that they were seeking to do some maintenance on or some remediation of some issues, so.
Yeah, like I said, I was just there last Thursday, and it seems like it was three years ago since that's just happened since.
Yeah, I understand.
Absolutely. Mr. Thornton and I actually were able to touch base earlier last week. And he is retiring, I believe, as the board knows. Harrison was one of those schools we did discuss. The issue with Harrison was there were, as I understand it, two rounds of bid solicitations with no respondents. The first two being packaged bid solicitations. So I believe the strategy for this next round to take to the PBC board is to gain an understanding of what we can parcel out and perhaps keep moving that forward. So absolutely, we'll try and work with PBC and move that out. We are also due to receive a payout from the PBC before the end of the year. I'm somewhat hopeful sooner rather than later. And then we'll be able to do some things in the district otherwise with that as well. That's been monetized, but that check hasn't arrived, so I never publish amounts until we actually have them in the bank. So that relationship is up, and we're communicating and moving forward.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I have a question about, was it the PBC that we were waiting to hear from on the property, the lot over at Glenn Oak School? Were the PBC supposed to do something with that?
Maintenance.
Maintenance? But someone else was responsible for that, right? We weren't waiting on the PBC.
PHS, that letter.
Nothing else, nothing has been done yet. Reports from board committees? Any reports?
I don't have a report, just that the Parent-Teacher Advisory Committee is scheduled to meet November 12 at 5:00. It's kind of a standing, standing committee meeting, the second Thursday of each month at 5:00 here for the Parent-Teacher Advisory Committee. And primarily, we're just working with the Senate Bill 100. So we continue to have that discussion and collaboratively work with the Policy Committee.
Anything else?
I believe our next Policy Committee meeting is on Tuesday, November 12.
Anything else for the good of the meeting? Not? You're on.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All right, we're adjourned.